Girl Talk, Girl Talk. What's better than Girl Talk? Chat with the ladies about their day, the ups and downs along the way. She's a cook, she's a chauffeur, she's a worker bee. First in the door and last to leave. Makes way less than the guy next door. She knows she's worth much more. Girl Talk, Girl Talk. What's better than Girl Talk? Girl Talk, Girl Talk. What's better than Girl Talk?
Hi, I'm Regina Ayers and I'm the host of Girl Talk. For those of you that are new to Girl Talk, Girl Talk showcases women who are making a difference in their communities here in the Rogue Valley. It is a lively discussion of the opportunities, successes, and challenges that women face in their daily lives. It is election season 2020 and I am interviewing the women in the Rogue Valley who are running for elected office. I'm interviewing 14 of the women, but that's not all the women that are running for office. There are women running against men and women running against women. There's so many women that are running and I'm so amazed that they are stepping up to take on what it means to run a campaign and to win an election. During the filming of the interviews, the catastrophic fires in Talent in Phoenix took place on September 8th. You will see in the interviews that some of the women were asked about the fire and others were not. And some of the women were not able to reschedule. I wish all the candidates the very best in their campaigns. Let's get started. Today, my guest is Gina DuKane and she is running for Ashland City Council, position five. Welcome Gina.
Hi Regina, thank you so much for having me. I'm so glad to be here on Girl Talk and looking forward to it.
Great, great. Well, let's start with the catastrophic fire that we've just been through. And why don't you just tell us where you and your family were when you heard about the fire?
The fires, they were devastating. When I realized it was that Tuesday and on my phone I have an alert and the alert sounded out and I looked at my phone and it said that Ashland was on a fire, level one. And I thought, level one? And so then I immediately turned on the TV and that's when I saw what was happening. And the winds were, it was so windy the night before. It was so windy that weekend. And if the winds had have been blowing in the other direction, it would have, my house would not be there. I wouldn't be here. And it just, it's such a devastating thing that happened. It just went south instead of, I mean, went north instead of south.
Just luck.
Yes, that's all it was.
Well, if you're elected to city council, how are you going to work with the other councilors and the new mayor to regionally work with Talent, Phoenix, Medford, other smaller communities that have been affected by this fire? So how are we going to work as a region to move this forward?
Do you know Regina, that is a great question because something that I believe is that we have to work together. We have to work together and do this together. I was on land usage, land usage class last evening and part of the things that we talked about and Pam Marsh was part of the conversation earlier was that it's going to take 12 to 14 years.
Oh, really? Is that what you're projecting?
I'm sorry, 12 to 14 months to clean up the mess.
Oh, just to clean up?
Just to clean up the mess. 12 to 14 months just to clean up the mess. It's not uncommon when fires like this occur that a lot of the people who were misplaced, displaced, have lost their homes, they leave the area. And we don't want people to leave the area, but in the meanwhile, where are they going to go? 12, 14 months. So hopefully looking at FEMA to come and kick in and also looking at the land use. Looking at the land usage, there's not a lot of extra land use in Talent and in Phoenix. So we might have to stretch out a little bit beyond that urban.
Our urban growth boundary?
Yes, yes.
Oh, so we're talking about zoning?
Yes, yes. And it would be just a temporary thing, but what is that going to look like after the temporary? So I believe that there's a lot of allowances that are going to have to occur to bring it together and make things happen. And I am one of the things that coming out of all of this chaos and all of this loss and devastation has really brought the Rogue Valley together. One region instead of chopping it up. I believe that's so important for us all to get together and collaborate and work together to build and build affordably. Affordably and build sustainably and to be able to build whereas it's sustainable, it's affordable, it's livable, it's walkable. So many things have to come into play to be able to build this up and we can do it. We just have to be patient, we have to be persistent and resilient and I believe we are resilient people.
Well Gina, we've known each other about seven years, I believe. I was on the housing, at the time it was just the Housing Commission. And then it became the Housing and Human Services Commission and you joined that commission. And I had been on there almost 10 years, so I left, but you stayed. And since you've been on there, I feel like you guys have done quite a bit. You've expanded on the Housing Trust Fund, which was a real coup for us to get that thing put together, but we didn't have any revenue stream to fund it. So why don't you tell us a little bit about what the commission and yourself accomplished towards creating some affordable housing?
Some of the things that we've done since you left city, since you left the commission, we have accomplished many things. We have a long way to go, but just looking back at the things that we've done, we've had about three different forms for rent burden residents in Ashland. And at those forms, we've had probably about 50 to 75 people attend. And at the forums, we had Jeff Golden, he was there to answer questions. Pam Marsh, we've had landlords there. We've had property management companies there to be able to answer questions that the audience might have. And the last one we had was at Ashland Hills. It was very, very effective because something that we wanted to do is when people attend, we wanted them to have the resources so that they could take with them to look at and review to answer any questions that maybe we didn't have an opportunity to go through at that time. So that's one of our big things that I really felt like were really effective. We also had a bus tour that I was, I thought was really good. Everybody enjoyed it. And that's when we invited the city council and we invited business owners to come and tour Snowberry and to tour Valley Verde Village and to be able to see other affordable residents in Ashland so that people could see what it looked like. Some people have this stigma in their minds about affordable housing and what's that going to look like and not in my neighborhood. Well, it's wonderful and people got along. Everybody enjoyed the neighborhood. So those are a couple of things that we've done and just the community outreach has been really, 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 I think has worked really well. We've also had, I don't know if we had this when you were on the commission, but we've had a student from SOU be on the commission to be that liaison to be able to tell us what their needs are and how we can better help serve everybody. Affordable housing and of course, so many times the students can be discriminated against.
Yes, yes. Well, I've heard you mention of the Hardesty Property.
Yes.
As a solution, potential, excuse me, potential solution to the housed and the unhoused. And I think you coordinated some kind of gathering of, you know, the key players. So why don't you tell us why, what the Hardesty Property is? The city owns it, is that correct?
Correct. The Hardesty Property is located on the north end of Ashland. It's 21 acres, it's owned by the city. Part of the property is in the city and prior to the property is in the county. So that's where a little bit of the concern and issues come in. If the city council will just allow us to use that property and then we can go to the city commissioners and work with them on the zoning of the property and be able to even use it as a temporary solution for now because COVID-19 is going to come back and rear its head. We are going into fall, we don't have time to waste. So I would love to be able to be there now, I'd say by November or mid-November, to be able to use it as a temporary location for our unhoused. We've had, the last time I was there, United Way toured it, La Clinica toured it, one of our council members, Julie Akins toured it, and then we also had Rogue Retreat. So we had a lot of the main players and the stakeholders there that can make this happen. Jobs with Justice was there. So how can we all make this work, working together? Regina, it is so doable and now is the time to make this happen. So I've been tasked with taking on the responsibility of reaching out to the county commission, touching base again with the stakeholders and asking them and renewing this in their minds and moving forward with it. So this is something, of course, we'll be talking about it again at our Housing and Human Services Commission meeting on Thursday. So I'll just bring them an update. However, being on city council would be a wonderful opportunity for me to be able to see this through as a permanent, long-lasting solution to our unhoused in Ashland.
So that's going to be a priority for you if you're elected?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, great. There is a PAC in town that has been established, which is the Ashland Citizens for Sustainability. ACES is their acronym. They've been very active and I think the people on that PAC are previous or even current members of the Budget Committee and some other people. So they have asked all of the candidates, mayors and councilors to sign a pledge. And I saw the pledge, it seems reasonable. It focuses on fiscal stewardship, priority-based budgeting, and economic development. So my question is, did you sign the pledge? If so, why? Or if you didn't sign the pledge, why didn't you?
Yes, I did. I did sign the paperwork from ACES and because to me it made sense. It made sense. I believe that we need fiscal stewardship. Every budget needs it, every city needs it. So when I saw that, it made sense. The budget, it is pretty much all about the budget and the budget is so important because in my opinion, the budget needs to be looked at, prioritized, and it needs to be transparent. Spending within our resources, not spending outside of our resources. And when it comes time to diversifying the economy, I am very big on that and if there's anything or the development of the economy, development and diversification to me are, let's develop it and how are we going to do it? We're going to diversify it. That's one of the things I really feel that are very important because one thing I believe this pandemic has showed us that for so long, all of our eggs have been in one basket in tourism. Putting everything in tourism, everything in OSF. We are Ashland, we are Southern Oregon, we are so much bigger than this, than that one entity. So to be able to diversify the economy and to be able to look at tech companies, green companies, something that is kind of scary when I say tech companies, people feel as if I'm thinking of Google or Facebook or I saw Primeville brought in Facebook and now they're going to bring in Apple and now they don't, they have a housing situation.
Yes.
And so something that I believe, looking at Ashland, we can be a little bit more choice-conscious of who we invite into Ashland. However, Eugene's workforce, 20% of their workforce teleworks, they work from home. So why can't we do that? I looked into this Regina and healthcare, technology and healthcare, technology and energy are the three top opportunities for people to work from home. And I mean, we all need healthcare and we're getting more and more techie. This is such a wonderful opportunity for Ashland whereas we don't need the brick and mortar buildings. People can work from anywhere, but they're working in their home. They're paying their bills, they're taking care of their family, they're making live in wages and that is so important. So for me, to diversify the economy is to develop the economy.
Okay, well, this is a topic that is near and dear to our hearts, you and I. We've had this discussion about the utilities in our community that are going up and up and up. And I think a lot of people are, you know, scrutinizing their utility bills in a way that they haven't before. So what is, what are your thoughts about the continuing increase in our utility rates? And how can we, I don't know if we can address the rise, the continuous rise. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, my thoughts, I believe, and I'm with you on that, what are these surcharges? What are these fees? What are these and where do they go? And my question to that is, is are they there because we have to pay a debt off? That's what I believe. So how long are we going to be paying this debt off? Once again, going back to transparency, I want to be able to open up and look at that and say, this fee is for this, this surcharge is for this, so that we don't have those questions. We know how come they're there and we know, okay, by this date, this will be paid off. And instead of it going up, it can start to go down. And as we develop our economy, we won't have to put on surcharges and taxes and undisclosed things that we don't know why they are, they just are. So as we, as we develop our economy, I can definitely see that changing and the transparency of knowing what they are and why they're there.
Well, how are you going to ensure that the utility bills are transparent, the budget is transparent? Well, how will you do that as a counselor?
Well, I'm hoping, I'm very hopeful that come November, I would love to be on city council and come November, I'm hoping I will have other like-minded people on city council. I understand that we'll have a city manager, which I think will be a very big plus. And everybody is not going to see things my way and I'm very fine with that, I'm cool with that. I want to be there for the people because the people of Ashland have the same questions that you and I have. And I want to be there for them so that how can we make it transparent just by cracking it open, finding out why? Why, why do we have this surcharge? Where is that money going? It's as simple as that. And putting it out there on the city's website so people can go and look and say, oh, okay, that's how come this is happening. And letting people know that the city's website is there so we can be an open book. So we are accountable because to be on city council is to be of service to the community.
Well, you're a public servant.
Correct.
That's all, that's what you are. And some people are cut out for it and some people aren't cut out for public servant jobs. And it's a real, it can be a thankless job, let's face that. But I think that we need to elect people that feel comfortable with that role and are committed to that role. So that's very important. So let's talk about the climate. We've just come through a catastrophic fire, so wildfires is a symptom of our climate crisis. So we here in Ashland have done, I think, a pretty good job. We have created, it's the Climate Energy Action Plan, SEEP. And so why don't you tell us what you think are some of the most important things, I got, there should be a better word than things, that we can do as individuals to address this climate catastrophe that we're actually physically living through now?
We have gone through this wildfire, some people call it, I look at it more as a climate fire. And when it comes to climate change and Climate Energy Action Plan, so many people feel as if it's out there and it's not here in my house or my neighborhood. And if, we are all in the same house right now. And I believe that just through educating people about SEEP and what SEEP does and to be able to realize that consumption is one of the biggest offenders to climate change. And about, each individual produces, generates about seven pounds of trash a day. So if we could reduce that individually and take ownership in being passionate about climate change and reduce that 7%, maybe down to 3% or 4%, as low as we can go, that's huge. And the most cost-effective way of changing the climate change for an individual is number one, reducing that trash, that's seven pounds to four, three, and recycling and composting. Those are the three easiest things that every individual can do in every household to help climate change because there is no plan B.
No. Now, if you're elected to the city council, you're going to be the first black woman on the Ashland City Council. And at some level, that is going to be more than just a responsibility as a city councilor, you're going to be a role model for other black or people of color. What's the acronym that we're using?
BIPOC.
Yes, now what's that stand for?
Black Indigenous People of Color.
Yes, BIPOC, thank you. So you're going to be a role model. And what I'd like to know is, how can our council, our mayor, our community, make this community more inviting to BIPOC people? We don't have very many people, BIPOC people in our town and it shows. So how, how do you think the council can make the city more inviting?
It is, it's very exciting. It's very exciting. And so this makes this position bigger than me. It's so much bigger than me. This, being on city council as the first African-American woman will allow me to open the doors for my community and the entire BIPOC community to come in and know that they are welcomed and they do have a place at the table, the conference table. And it's time. Before people have asked me, you know, why now? Well, it's time and it's past time. I believe that I want Ashland to walk the walk. You know, Ashland's been talking the talk, well, I want Ashland to walk the walk. I want people of color to know that yes, we are accepted and yes, we can. And to let them know about being on school boards, being on commissions, taking part in their community and yes, we can. So I feel as if this would be such an honor, such an honor all the way around. And I look forward to it and it just, it really, just sitting here thinking about it gets me very excited and the hope of that Regina is huge.
Great, great, wonderful. Well, I ran for office in 2012, so I know a little bit about what it takes to run for office here in Ashland. But times have changed, that was, my goodness, it was eight years ago. And, and we have COVID. So there isn't the canvassing that was very important for other campaigns in the past. So what are some of the issues that, you know, you find are unique to this COVID time? And how are you, how are you handling them?
These are very interesting times to be campaigning. When we started looking at this in November of last year, myself and my emerged sisters, we were all excited and we're going to go out and conquer the world and this is the way it's going to look. Well, then in March, everything changed. And so having to be, having to switch gears in the middle of everything, well, not quite in the middle, but switch gears, it made it look very different. So no canvassing. So now it's phone banking, phone texting. Thank God for social media. You know, it's Instagram, it's Facebook, it's Zoom. Who knew Zoom? I never, never knew Zoom until now. So because we have technology, thank God, we are able to have a campaign. And people still read the newspaper. We can have Zoom house parties and getting to know the candidate. I did talks in the park, which were fun.
I attended one of those, yes.
Yes, that was fun and that was social distancing and that was good. But it looks very different now. It looks very different now, it's not as personal. So my biggest thing was, how do you get to know the candidate? And that's one reason why I'm so grateful that I get to be on Girl Talk.
Thank you.
So that people can get to know me a little better and feel free to reach out via social media to ask me any other additional questions. But it's just a different look and right now, as you know, is the time to get the vote out.
Right.
And so it's lawn signs, it's phone texting, banking, calling and just reaching out and letting people know who I am, getting them to just register to vote and make an educated decision that they will feel good about.
Yeah, the times, they are a-changing, aren't they?
Yes.
If all the women who are running for office for city council, plus the mayor's position and that will be a woman, we have two women, which is fabulous. If all those women win, we're going to have a majority female governing body here in Ashland. So how do you think that is going to change the dynamic? You know, I've been here 18 years and I was, I was here, I came after, just after Kathy Shaw had been mayor. So I don't, I don't have the experience of having a female mayor. And we've had a few women on the council, but a few. So how do you think the dynamic is going to change?
Great idea. I say, let's do it. Do you know, I'm thinking about our amazing notorious Ruth Bader Ginsburg. She was asked, how many women should be on the Supreme Court? She said nine. So my answer to that would be, is I feel it's time. You know, sometimes people feel as if, you know, well, we're not ready for that or Ashland's not ready for that. Ashland's not ready for a black woman to be on council. Ashland's not ready for women to be, so many women to be on council. It's time. You know, I was surprised when, I believe we've only had one female mayor and as long as we've had Ashland. And I thought, that was ridiculous. And to look and see that we've had no black women or no women of color on council, I thought that was very interesting. And so we've never had any queer people on council that we've known of. So that too was very interesting. So I feel as if it's time, it's time for change, it's time for new ideas, new visions. And I love my fellow man, however, I do believe that women think broadly. We think broadly, we can do what's in front of us right now, however, we think broadly into the future. I am a visionary. I see what needs to be done immediately and then what are we going to do after that? I am a visionary, I'm not just stuck right here and right now because that's not life. And if we don't keep moving, we become extinct. So I am ready for it, I look forward to it, it's going to be amazing.
It's going to be fun.
Yes.
Well Gina, thanks for joining us today. Would you like to say any closing remarks to the audience?
Well, thank you for having me. I'm glad I could be here and thank you for your support. And thank you for opening up this space for us to share. And something that I, I am just grateful that I could be in this position and take this, do this run. Something that I do know, and I would, I want people to be able to know who I am. So feel free to take a look at my website and go to my Facebook page to get to know me better and even get on the phone and call me. I am definitely a one-on-one person. I am also up to the challenge. And something that we touched on earlier is being a public servant. I am up for that challenge. And I am passionate about Ashland, about this position. And I get things done. Anybody who knows me knows that I get things done. And I am a collaborator. I am a problem solver. And I'm all about transparency and honesty. And that's something that I will definitely bring to city council. And I look forward to working together to build an equitable, sustainable, thriving Ashland.
Great. Well, thank you, Gina, for being with me on Girl Talk today. And good luck with your campaign.
Thank you, thank you so much, Regina.
This series showcases women who are running for elected office in 2020. I hope that you learn something about why they're running, who they are, and whether you'll be able to support them when you vote on November 3rd. Now more than ever, we need leaders who are up to the task of rebuilding our communities. Leaders who can create the strategies, execute the plans, and take us all forward to a more hopeful future. Whether you vote for these women or not, remember to vote on November 3rd. Girl Talk can be seen on Channel 15 on Ashland Home Net or Channel 182 on Spectrum or always on demand at rvtv.sou.edu. You can also watch Girl Talk on my Regina Ayers YouTube channel for all Girl Talk episodes. I'm Regina Ayers, and thanks for joining me on Girl Talk.